... this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency. It is Monday, March 17th. Happy St. Patrick's Day. And the time is 1:30 PM. This meeting is now called to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Sedenz, would you please call the roll?
Chair Naklis.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
Commissioner Wigtar.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, are there any amendments to the agenda?
We don't propose any amendments this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of February 24th, 2025?
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Thank you. First by Mr. Singer, second by Councilmember Drucker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Anyone opposed? No. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. We have no presentations today, nor any quasi judicial or related public hearings, so we'll move on to public requests. If anyone would like to speak on matters pertaining to the CRA, please stand. And you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. And we'll see. Do we have some cards? No? Would anyone like to speak? Come on up.
Hi, hopefully I'm in the right place. I'm applying for the community advisory panel.
That's not right now.
Okay.
That's the next meeting. Thank you. You're in the right place, but not the right meeting yet. Sure. Would anyone else like to speak on matters regarding the CRA? Okay, seeing none, we will close public requests. There are no resolutions and regular public hearings today, and no other business or settlements. So now we'll move on to the Director's Report. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chair Naklis. The item on the agenda is discussion of the CRA's summer schedule, which also affects the City Council. It has been our practice to take off the first meeting in June. I'm sorry. Let me start over. To meet the first meeting in June, take off the second meeting in June, take off the first meeting in July, meet the second meeting in July, take off the first meeting in August, and then take, and then meet the second meetings in August. So we would be taking off June 23rd, July 21st. I'm sorry, I keep messing this up. I apologize. The days off would be, for the CRA would be June 23rd, July 7th, and August 11th. And we will prepare a resolution for the next meeting if that's, if everybody's, if everybody concurs.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I will actually be away for one of those, the end of July. I will be gone for that, but it's, Mr. Singer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since you brought it up, I'd be fine with moving it to the 14th, 15th if that would work. I have a potential conflict, those dates, but I would respect the historic nature of the scheduling. But since you brought it up, I'll bring it up too. Maybe there, maybe that works better. Also, 14th, 15th might be better in the month in case we need to do any additional meetings relating to downtown campus. It gives us, you know, another interval that's not so far apart. So something that needed to slip in then, and needed another, you know, meeting afterwards.
Can I?
Thank you for sharing. Yes.
Can I weigh in here? So I think I'm gonna trump everyone. So July 21st is gonna be my 50th birthday.
Aww.
So if we can move it to the 14th and 15th, that would be better for me as well. As much as I want to spend time with you all, I would rather be with my family and my friends on my 50th birthday.
Your other friends.
And my other friends.
Does anybody else have any other discussion? So can we move it to the July 14th and 15th?
We'll plan accordingly, and we can rediscover this with the council at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else on that, Mr. Brown?
No.
Okay. I wanted to ask you, during your report, we discussed adding additional police in the CRA for increased enforcement. Can you update us on that, please?
Yes. As a result of some of the recent concerns, we've had some targeted traffic enforcement in the CRA area. Last week, between Tuesday and Friday, there were 76 traffic stops specifically in the downtown. We are adding, we're going to be adding two dedicated traffic enforcement officers to the CRA patrol. One will be, one is actually in the budget now. We've reallocated a position to be able to bring somebody on as soon as we can, and the other will be added to the budget in October. If we're able to fill in advance, we will try, we will endeavor to do that. But we're bringing on additional enforcement. They will be assigned strictly to traffic and pedestrian safety enforcement in the CRA area.
Okay.
Funded by the CRA.
Okay. Thank you. Currently, we have how many officers in the CRA?
Six.
Six. Okay, so we're adding to that.
We're adding to that.
Okay.
Because they're, they're doing other, other than traffic enforcement.
Okay, and this is specifically traffic enforcement?
Yeah, the general law enforcement. These will be dedicated to traffic.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Any other report, Mr. Brown?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kahler?
No report, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Commissioners' reports. Vice Chair Thompson?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Singer?
I'll save the welcome I report for the workshop. Thank you to staff through Organized, a Great State of the City and Community Celebration.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker?
The only thing I want to say, just because it does affect the CRA, just we're keeping track of the bill that's moving pretty quickly. It's being caught, it's called fast tracked in Tallahassee, and I, for whatever reason, I can't think of the bill number, I'm sure Mr. Wigtar can help me out.
It's HB 911.
991. It's passed the first two committees. It was last Tuesday and Thursday. We had an update this morning from Florida League of Cities. The bill is still on fast track, and basically to tell everyone in the audience what the bill is about, is basically this bill would eliminate CRAs in future years, in about, I think it's like they're looking at 2035, 2045, but where they would eliminate the CRA completely. So please write to your local representatives that are up there in Tallahassee advocating, or not even advocating for these bills, but just to make sure how detrimental that would be for CRAs, just like our own. What they asked for us today from the Florida League of Cities group was to let them know how this really impacts our economic driver for our downtown. And everybody always asks, like, why is this happening? What happened is, there's, there has been misuse of CRA funds in other cities and other counties. Not here, not in our city, not necessarily in our county, and they're trying to apply that to all the CRAs. And what we're trying to say is, because you have one bad apple, please don't hurt the rest of us, because we're doing the right thing to improve our community and our downtown. So please keep an eye on that bill. It's moving really, really fast. And that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Mr. Wigtar?
Thank you. And I am gonna double down on Deputy Mayor Drucker's report, because that's exactly what I was gonna talk about as well. My colleagues and I, we were up in Tallahassee advocating for the city, talking about this specific issue. As you all know, in our CRA, it's divided into subareas. And what I've learned over the past several years is that we don't do all of the infrastructure work in our CRA at the same time. It's not possible. People live there already. There's new things being developed, year after year. And as a result, you could see, we did SubArea B work, where Meisner Park is, we did SubArea E work, where the, where the Alina is. And of course, now we're getting to the point where we have all these other infrastructure projects that have to be done. We just amended our CRA downtown plan again, I guess, Mr. Brown, it was last year or two years ago, with a list of these projects. And now that we're going to do the government center, a significant portion of the infrastructure that's underneath the government center, all the pipes, all the electrical, all those things, and redoing the streets, that's gonna be a part of doing this government master plan. And as we all know, each building there is 40, 50, 60 years old, so everything there, all the infrastructure, is quite dated, and it's gonna have to be replaced at this time. So it's very, I guess, appropriate in a certain respect that we're, we're doing the government center plan, and, and it kind of coincides with this, with this bill happening, because what, what could happen is, we could be forced to accelerate the work that's happening there, because all of these projects will have to be approved by a certain date. The bill is still in flux a little, there might be some changes there, because our, you know, capital improvement program is already five years out. But it's important that all this stuff in SubArea A is stuff that we haven't touched yet in many, many years, and it's gonna be important for us to kind of consider prioritizing all of these infrastructure works as we're also reviewing what happens with this bill. So obviously, it's something that we've all talked about. We've talked to our state senators, we've talked to our state representative, we've talked to multiple people, our lobbyists up in Tallahassee, and we presented these findings with them. We're working with Mr. Brown, and Mr. Brown, of course, has been working with staff in many different departments, doing these kind of hypothetical and what-if scenarios on many of these bills that could affect the city. So, Mr. Brown, thank you, and staff, for those things too. So as you know, we're keeping a very close track of this, but it really could affect how we operate the CRA for the remainder of its life, especially in this critical project that we're doing. So just letting everyone know that we're paying close attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigtar. And Mr. Wigtar, Ms. Drucker, I also had this in my report to talk about. So it is important, some bright light, I think, to it is that our lobbyist said, the bill has advanced, however, significant amendments to the bill are anticipated, which is good, as many members of the committee felt it went too far. And it would prevent projects, as you said, in a municipality's pipeline from, from coming to fruition. So yes, we'll keep an eye on that. So I'd like to thank Downtown Manager Ruby Riley for putting together an update of upcoming events. I'll go through these quickly. March 17th and March 31st at 7:00 PM, please join Beer Garden in Royal Palm Place for Music Bingo Night. And all you need to bring with you are your teammates and your phone. Using the Rockstar Bingo app, players can listen to snippets of songs and mark the ones they recognize for a chance to win prizes, including $25 gift cards. Don't forget to enjoy $3 brats while you're there. Learn more at beergardenboca.com. March 21st at 7:30 PM and March 22nd at 8:30 PM, The Bronx Wanderers are coming back to the studio at Meisner Park. The show fuses rock and roll with Broadway and will take fans on an epic exploration of music as it was meant to be heard, featuring hits from all eras and genres. Get your tickets at thestudioatmeisnerpark.com. March 22nd at noon, tickets are still available for the City of Boca Raton Seafood Festival. This event will feature a seafood stage with bands such as The Holidays and Unravel, Neptune's Marketplace with nautical-themed vendors, a seafood showdown with local chefs, a crab cake challenge, and much more. Visit meisneramp.com for tickets. And here's what's coming up at The Funky Biscuit. March 21st at 6:00 PM, An Evening with Dan Rodriguez. March 27th at 6:00 and 9:00 PM, Jazz artist Vincent Ngala. April 3rd at 7:00 PM, Chris Kane with special guest The Chris O'Leary Band. April 4th at 9:00 PM, Victor Wainwright and The Train. Tickets are available at funkybiscuit.com. March 27th at 5:30 PM, college students are flocking to the Boca Museum of Art for College Night. This unique opportunity lets them hang, sip the tea, meet new people, and enjoy a night of fun, making art, learning, and socializing. Register now at boca museum.org. March 27th at 6:00 PM, the Downtown Boca Raton Library will host their Thursday Night Speaker Series, featuring Marina Kirsch. Kirsch, author of Flight of Remembrance, will present her family's true story of resilience and new beginnings from World War II, with many parallels drawn to today's war in Ukraine. Drop-ins are welcome, but you can reserve a seat as well at boca library.org. April 3rd at 6:00 PM, the City of Boca Raton Night Market is back. Sanborn Square will be home to delicious food options, sweet treats, local artists and makers, live music, and at this free monthly event. Learn more at myboca.us/communityevents. April 3rd through the 6th at various times, the Boca Raton Historical Society proudly presents their annual Boca Bacchanal Events. Boca Bacchanal celebrates the appreciation of wine and food, and this festive weekend brings together world-class chefs and vintners, offering their finest specialties to support the heritage education and historic preservation programs of the Boca Raton Historical Society. The vintner dinners are April 3rd to the 5th, and the grand tasting event will be on April 6th at the Addison. Get your tickets at boca history.org. And don't forget, you can spend more time enjoying downtown Boca and less time driving and parking by taking the Boca Connect Shuttle. This on-demand service runs through downtown Boca Raton and beyond, offering first-mile, last-mile mobility solutions within and around downtown area and in the city, and now you can even take it to the Barrier Island. Visit downtownboca.org for more information and to download the app on your phone. So there's a picture up, and since we last met, I attended along with my colleagues some of the Festival of the Arts events, and I want to congratulate again Joanna Marie Kay for an outstanding festival lineup this year. I went to a press conference with Deputy Mayor Drucker and the Dory Saves Lives Organization and School Board Member Gloria Branch, in support of SB 1318 to further Florida's commitment to road safety. And of course, the wonderful State of the City Community Celebration at Meisner Park. So as the work of our Community Redevelopment Agency fully transitions into 2025 with the upcoming organizational meeting, I would like to take a moment to reflect on what we've accomplished together over the past year. First and foremost, I want to recognize the vision and commitment of my colleagues, our staff and residents and businesspeople who continue to move our downtown forward. Your dedication has energized results. Over the past year, we've gotten things done, starting with a renewed focus on strategic financial planning. We retained and allocated tax increment financing funds where they belong for transformative projects, including the critically important Future Pedestrian Bridge that will enhance downtown connectivity, a second Bright Line platform to allow for a more comprehensive schedule that works better for Boca, and upgrades to the Meisner Park Amphitheater and open space, as well as the original heart of our downtown renaissance, Sanborn Square. Additionally, we've prioritized infrastructure improvements and beautification, including a complete painting refresh of gazebos, benches, and lighting in Meisner Park, safety enhancements in Sanborn Square with advanced plans for security cameras in the Meisner Park corridor, new placemaking signage to enhance the resident and visitor experience, and completed the retro art Reflections of Time sculpture in Sanborn Square that brings our history once again into the present. At the same time, we're finally restoring our fountains, and I know that's something all of us have wanted to do for a very long time, and it's getting done. Truly, we're really, we're really bringing the downtown public realm back to the quality Boca expects, with landscaping as it was originally planned, sod replacement, branded pavement and sidewalk markers, and utility box wraps to make our downtown what it's supposed to be. Exceptional, beautiful, and uniquely Boca. We also continue to improve mobility and parking, with a pilot program of parking space sensors launching to improve parking access and efficiency for everyone. It's simple, cool technology that's proven to work elsewhere. I'm excited it's being fast-tracked here. And promises made, promises kept, we're expanding the Free Boca Connect Shuttle service to the beach area to better serve residents. We're going to get even more done in the coming months with a new downtown project manager to efficiently advance key initiatives. World-renowned visionary Jeff Speck will help guide our efforts to improve downtown safety, walkability, and connectivity, aligned with the foundation already set by Alta Planning and Design on the re-envisioning of Palmetto Park Road. And speaking of safety, as we just discussed, new police officers are being dedicated to our downtown, because it's the right thing to do. And to be clear, none of this is by accident. The results of our voter-approved downtown plan continues to attract new businesses and residents, making this vital part of Boca Raton more sustainable and vibrant, as we're taking the next step in that journey with our exciting new collaboration with Terra and Frisbee Groups on the re-imagining of the Bright Line District Civic Campus and Community Space. So let me finish by saying, with a nod to Deputy Mayor Drucker, the best is truly yet to come in downtown Boca Raton. Please visit downtownboca.org, download the My Boca app to keep up with all the happenings downtown and report concerns. Get the Circuit app. Reminder to please visit and support all the small businesses in the downtown, especially the many small locally-owned businesses and restaurants in the downtown. And of course, if you have anything that you'd like to share, please reach out to me at fnaklis@myboca.us, or you can give me a call. I'd love to hear from you. Again, I wish everyone a happy and St. Patrick's Day. And with that, and no other business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned at 1:48 PM. Thanks.
Good afternoon and welcome to a regular meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, March 17th, 2025. The time is 1:51 PM. Our first item of business today is a proclamation for Florida Bicycle Month, and we actually took a photo with Engineering Director Zach Beer, Traffic Engineer Naresma Hachverbuh, and others from our Public Works and Engineering teams. So at this point, Ms. Sedenz, if you please read the proclamation, we'll go with that.
Whereas bicycling is a clean, efficient, healthy, economical, and accessible means of transportation and recreation, with a variety of associated benefits for individuals and society at large. And whereas bicycling has the potential to play a significant transportation role in Boca Raton and the surrounding environs, to reduce the number and impact of motor vehicle trips, and to improve the quality of life in our city. And whereas the City of Boca Raton has a commitment to maintain and improve conditions for bicyclists who ride to work and school, to accomplish errands, and for recreation and fitness. Whereas through these efforts, Boca Raton now has over 84 miles of bicycle lanes, as well as shared youth paths and trails. The city's bicycle network has been enhanced by unique and highly successful projects. And whereas the state of Florida officially recognizes March as Bicycle Month, now therefore, I, Scott Singer, Mayor of the City of Boca Raton, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Florida Bicycle Month in Boca Raton, and in so doing, encourage our residents to enjoy bicycling in Boca Raton's improved network of paths and trails.
Thank you very much. I know my colleagues, Deputy Mayor Drucker and Councilmember Naklis, have been participating in bikes, bike rides through the TPA. I know my other colleagues ride bikes as well, and I believe we have a free bike tune-up available to residents this Friday. Details at myboca.us. Oh, Ms. Drucker?
Mayor Singer, can I take a point of privilege to introduce someone in the audience before they head out?
Certainly.
So, good afternoon, everyone. So my daughter is visiting from Maryland for a college break. Selma, thanks for joining us. With one of her friends, Carol, they're in the chambers, and I just wanted to welcome you to Boca Raton, and I'm glad that you're staying with us, and I hope that you enjoy the city as much as I enjoy the city. And Selly, it's great to have you home this week.
Welcome back. If you'd like to apply for any boards, we're gonna entertain those now. So, Ms. Drucker, you're a resident, you qualify for many of those. All right. Thank you. Well, she's, not all of them require residency, but we've had college students to claim your residency. In any case, that'll be up to you. But we do have applicants for several boards, including our community advisory panel. I know someone wanted to speak earlier, so if you're interested in interviewing for this board or any other, when your board is called, please come up to the lectern, give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes to tell us why you want to serve. Thank you. So, community advisory panel, yes, you're first.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Georgia Christakis, and I live at 1011 Northwest 4th Street in Boca Raton, Florida. I am applying to serve on the community advisory panel. Boca Raton is very special to me. I was actually born and raised here, and I attended two of our public schools, and I'm spending much of my childhood at our beautiful beaches, parks, and nature centers. I moved away for school and my medical training, and a few years ago, I moved back to raise my family and practice medicine here. As a pediatrician and mom, I'm really thankful to be able to raise my family in a city that's green, with so many wonderful resources for kids and their families, as we kind of talked about with the Bicycle Initiative for March. I've seen Boca Raton through many years of change, and while change is not necessarily a bad thing, it's important that, to me, that our city grows in a way that's sustainable, mindful, and beneficial to all of us in the community. I would love to see our city expand its walking, running, and cycling trails and paths, and continue to offer green space for everyone to enjoy. As someone born and raised here, it's also important to me that our city remains affordable and accessible to everyone, not just a select few. It would be an honor to serve on the community advisory panel and to be a part of the next era of our city's growth. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Christakis? All right, thank you. We'll make the appointments tomorrow night, and this goes for this board and any others. Yes, come on up. You do not need to be present tomorrow night to be considered if you interviewed today.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Jaffe. I live at 1495 Northwest 48th Lane in Boca Raton. I am a licensed clinical social worker. I have my own private practice here in Boca, and I also am the Senior Program Manager for Mental Health Services for chewy.com. So if you have pets, hopefully you're a customer of Chewy. I've been with them for almost eight years. So having lived in the city almost my entire life, born and raised here, moved back here So having lived in the city almost my entire life, born and raised here, moved back here after grad school, I believe that I possess a deep understanding of Boca's history, culture, and evolving needs. I have awareness of the city's challenges and strengths, and I think those will make me a valuable voice in any decision-making process. I believe that civic engagement is a crucial part of building a thriving and balanced community. It is important to effectively contribute to discussions, collaborate with others, and drive positive change for the city of Boca Raton. I view serving this committee as a rewarding and meaningful responsibility. I'm dedicated to making a tangible impact by advocating for residents and ensuring that all voices are heard. Finally, I'm eager to contribute ideas that promote sustainable growth and community well-being for all residents of Boca Raton. I look forward to hearing from you and hope to be able to serve on the Community Advisory Panel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Any other applicants for this board? Yes.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. My name is Jose Soto, and my address is 20943 Pacifico Terrace, that's in Boca, 33433. I came to Boca about 24 years ago to build a future for my family, and I fell in love with this community. I bring over 25 years of business and leadership experience. I have helped organizations grow and be more efficient, and I also have a track record of community service through a score, the Hispanic Entrepreneurship Initiative in collaboration with the Boca Chamber of Commerce, and also with the city's Community Emergency Response Team. My purpose is to empower individuals and organizations to achieve their best and to enhance the well-being of communities. I feel ready to serve Boca at the higher level, and I'm eager to serve in the Community Advisory Panel because I want this city to remain as a world-class, beautiful, vibrant community, and one of the most desirable places to live in. As a member of the Community Advisory Panel, I look forward to contributing to initiatives that improve the quality of life for all of residents. I believe that my experience and skills align particularly well with three of the city's key strategic focus areas and priorities, and key areas identified in the community survey. The first one is community engagement. I can help by engaging with the communities, understand their concerns, their concerns and needs, and increase resident participation. The second area is sustaining economic growth. I am committed to fostering the development of small and medium businesses and supporting the local entrepreneurs to strengthen our economic foundation. And the third area is in the delivery of world-class services. I can help by identifying opportunities for process improvement, innovation, and adoption of key technologies to enhance the delivery of services across the city. Finally, some fun facts about me. I'm an avid traveler, outdoor enthusiast, foodie, and I love discovering hidden gems here in Boca. I can mention some of ones that I discovered lately. And also, as a former university professor, I look forward to re-entering the higher education field and teaching Boca. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to serving the Community Advisory Panel to make a positive difference for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any other applicants for the Community Advisory Panel? All right, we'll take up those appointments tomorrow night, as I said. Thank you for interviewing. We'll consider them all tomorrow night. Turn to the Community Appearance Board. Is Mr. Rodriguez present? I believe he's your only applicant. He's our only applicant? All right. General Employees Pension Board, I see some applicants. Welcome, Mr. Timberlake. Please give your name and address. You have three minutes. Up to.
Stephen Timberlake. I'm Special Projects Manager for the city at 114 Harbors Way. I've been a member of the General Employees Pension Plan. This will be my third appointment. I've been the chair for the last five years, and I'm happy to continue to serve at your pleasure.
Thank you. Short and sweet. Any questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Sarek, are you present? I don't see you. All right. Again, we'll consider those tomorrow night. We'll turn to the Permitting and Construction Review Board. I don't believe we have applicants for this position. We are looking for an architect. We filled some of the other positions, but now we're just looking for, oh no, excuse me, we're looking for an engineer structural, structural engineer. So we got the electrical engineer after long last, now we'd like a structural engineer. You know anyone? Please ask them to apply. We'll turn to the Planning and Zoning Board. I don't believe we have any applicants present. And then we'll turn to the Police and Firefighters Retirement System Board. And I know we have some applicants. Thank you. Mr. Wellhef, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just, I'm up here to reapply for the Police and Fire Pension Board. Open position, I believe there's two open positions. Served on the pension board for approximately 20 years, and the last two years in the capacity as a city appointee. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Flynn. I am a city resident with an exempted address under 119. I'm here as well to apply for the Police and Fire Pension Position. I am educated here in the city of Boca Raton, Masters from Lynn University. I have recently retired from the Boca Raton Police Department after 25 and a half years, and I have a vested interest in the plan, not just for myself, but for my brothers and sisters in police and fire.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? I just wanted to say, congratulations. I haven't seen you since retirement, Captain. You're looking well, and thank you for your interest in serving.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our board interviews. So open the Florida Public Request. Ms. Colas, I have your card, and Ms. Morrow, I know you want to speak under Item 7, so we can hold your card until then, but Ms. Colas, if you'd like to speak now, please. And then anyone else who wishes to speak, please come forward.
My name is Anastasia Colas. I live at 199 Mansfield E., Boca Raton, Florida. I submitted a project proposal, and it is included on page three of the document that you just got. Cybercrime has been connected to billions in dollars in damages, and I am willing to establish a police force, or even just a volunteer force, to combat this for free, but there are certain costs, which are listed above. Transportation costs, equipment costs, and there is a needed education for some of the cops as well, because they're not doing the same thing that traditional cops do. I have been trying to form this police force since last year, and I am losing hope on it being understood that the current police force that we have cannot deal with cybercrime at all. I believe rapes, break-ins, thefts that cause billions in dollars of damages is more important than traffic stops, and resolving this for nothing more than a vehicle and funding for items like printing and equipment costs, and possibly like assistance to make sure when I leave for work my mom is okay, is what I'm looking for. I know $700,000 is a lot of money, but this may seem small in comparison to what could happen when you guys invest $2 million to change the water infrastructure, and something goes wrong, and people end up sick in Boca. So, and that ends up endangering citizens because of some unsecure upgrade in technology that needs to be reviewed by educated police officers, cybercops. I may look bad in a lot of places, but I have over 50 signatures confirming the issues that I've referenced previously, such as DNS corruption in the Boca Raton area, the need for a stronger force to look at SCADA networks, and so on. And no, normal police officers cannot do any of this, since, cannot do any of this. If something goes wrong with our infrastructure or tech in this area, cops around here cannot respond well. I even have an example of Apple and Best Buy where someone targeted their supply chains and got bad tech into those stores. That's included in some of, in the packets you have. Cybercriminals know that police officers don't look at any of this, and that's why cybercrime is high in the Boca Raton area. In fact, something strange is going on. I had referenced that cybercriminals living here are now going to police departments and copying my idea to do harm rather than good. That's not good at all. They're going to other cities, and those cities are actually paying criminals behind the crimes to investigate now, and the person who actually made the idea of cyber police is not actually able to do anything right now. So this is part of-
Ms. Colas, could you please conclude your remarks? Your time is expired.
Okay. All right. This is part of the reason why I'm stressing that we need to make a proper cyber police force, because this, this needs to be resolved as quickly as possible. All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Wasn't going to come, but then I heard the comments in the CRA about House, specifically about House Bill 991. And apparently, everything this city does is great, everything everybody else does isn't. However, obviously, I came for many, many times regarding State Bill 328, or State Bill 102. And this city's interpretation may be the reason, and part of the reason, why this state is taking action regarding the CRAs. Because this city specifically, and I've spoken to the author of State Bill 102 and 328, what this city did exempting, in essence, the downtown is exactly probably why they did this. And maybe if a bill such as this passed, it would make you think citywide instead of thinking that you can exempt an area. And maybe there'll be better legislation that this city makes. So I've spoken behind the scenes to many of you. I've seen presentations on the downtown government project in which where they, certain council members envision this city's center. And maybe it's time that we look at the, as a council, to ask your staff regarding 20 units an acre for an area such as this that you see project after project. Tomorrow night, or sorry, at PNZ, there's another hearing for Park of Commerce Boulevard for 234 more units. So we're talking 10-acre, 15-acre properties, 20-acre properties, Home Depot. This is where all the development's happening. And unless you incorporate, they're incorporating 80,000 square feet of a different use, yet still doing the maximum. Unless you get your entire neighborhood involved, all the parcels around yours, you can't do meaningful development at 20 units an acre, whether it be Mutual of America, Office Depot. Every site has mixed use, they maximize their residential, and it still have other uses on the property. So again, I think you all should think about what State Bill 991's about, and what you've done, and this previous city attorney, regarding the interpretation of the downtown being exempt from a project, from projects regarding State Bill 328. Because there's a reason why this state does what the state does. So I'd just like to think you all to think about that, maybe make a suggestion that 20 units an acre isn't feasible in Boca Raton to do mixed-use residential where this is the area that it's meant to be, and allow it to develop, and allow this area to flourish the way that PMD intended, and the city can do great things, and increase the tax revenue and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Morrow, yes. Do you want to speak now or under the item that you requested, Number 7, which is the downtown campus? You can choose either one.
I'm the government redevelopment.
Why don't you just wait a moment too? Because we'll have an update momentarily, and there's not much on the agenda before.
Call me up. And excuse me, I did not bring my hearing aids, so please help me.
Certainly, and if you need assistance in the meantime, our staff can help you, but I will, I think we're okay. Anyone else wishing to speak under public request? Then we'll close the time for public requests. We'll turn to items of review of regular agenda items. Are there any questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda? Ms. Drucker.
No, Mayor Singer, but I just want to clarify a point. I usually don't comment on public requests, but I am going to comment, since I brought the CRA information. Mr. Ungian, I can assure you that it wasn't our city that caused this bill to come forward. It was absolutely not the correct thing that you're saying. Those two bills have nothing to do with each other. The reason that bill was brought forward is my job to educate you, because I'm the one up there, we're the ones up there. It was because certain cities allegedly were misusing the funds in the CRA, and I know that our city does not do that, because we get audited every year, and that information is public record. But it's very important for me, as I sit up here and advocate for our city and our state, that we always have accurate information. It's our job up here to educate folks like you so that there's no misinformation out there. And if you would like to have any other conversation, we could plan on that. Thank you, Mayor Singer.
Thank you. Any other, all right. Thank you for that. Any questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda? If so, we can take up those items when they're heard tomorrow. So I don't see any. I will go now, immediately to, it was seven, but it's actually Item 5. Future Agenda Matters, Items of Public Concern, and we have, as always, at our agendas, the Government Campus Partnership Opportunity. So I'll turn first to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lukasik's going to give us a brief update on where we are today and where we're going to be going tomorrow night.
Thank you, Mr. Lukasik.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Can not hear. Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. So probably more comments than reports at this point. Couple of things. One is that lots of activity in the background. Staff has been meeting on a weekly basis with CBRE. We're working on developing our action plans, planning next steps, giving updates as to where we are on certain items related to the ultimate development of the downtown campus. That's happening on a regular basis. So rest assured, there's a lot of people engaged in moving, moving us forward as we're making our plans. Included in that is looking for and evaluating temporary office space. So we have been working over the course of the past several weeks trying to identify temporary office space, try to understand what our best opportunities might be. So that process is ongoing. We're continuing to share public feedback with Terra Frisbee. So as you know, you receive the comments from the public every week, so we give you a summary as to what we've heard. And we're responding to some of those comments too, by the way. If there's a question or something that we can respond to, we're doing that. But we're sharing that with Terra Frisbee, so they're aware of some of the comments and some of the concerns that residents have raised as it relates to the downtown project. And then, and then lastly, we're working with Terra Frisbee right now to start establishing some work groups. Those work groups are going to be critical building blocks for us to be able to work on all of the components of the master partnership agreement that will be, that will ultimately be, be the goal of all the work that we're going to do, that we're going to talk about here in a second. Tomorrow, tomorrow's an important day because you're considering an interim agreement with Terra Frisbee. That particular agreement is going to set the roles and responsibilities for the city and for Terra Frisbee. It's also going to establish some timelines for certain milestone events that need to happen along the way as we're working towards a master partnership agreement. That master partnership agreement is really going to set the framework for us as we're moving forward. So it'll set the, it'll, it'll, it'll provide the roles and responsibilities again for both parties. It'll ultimately kind of carve that path for the redevelopment of the downtown campus. That, that process is also going to result in a lot of public outreach. So you'll hear me talk a little bit tomorrow as we go through the timeline and some of the aspects of that interim agreement. We already have some upfront public outreach that we're going to do before they come, before Terra Frisbee comes back with a revised conceptual plan. It'll be referred to as the interim master plan. But they're going to be revising their concept plan, and we're going to be doing some public engagements- engagement, some deep public engagement before they get to that point. So I just wanted to kind of give you that, that little update as to where we are, where we're going. We'll talk a little bit more about what's in the interim agreement, what the timelines are tomorrow night. But happy to answer any questions that you might have before then.
All right. Council members, any questions for staff? Oh, Mr. Wiger.
Thank you.
He was very subtle.
When we talk about the idea of municipal services being downtown, you used in several instances the word temporary. We've had previous conversations, multiple conversations, that the evaluation that CBRE will be doing along with our new potential partner would be a cost benefit analysis of not just a temporary move, but true, once we get actual construction estimates of the cost to do this, which preliminary estimates from many of the proposers are at six or seven or $800 a square foot, that we could either bifurcate municipal services, move into some sort of long-term lease in another more centralized geographic jurisdiction of the city. And so, Mr. Lukasik, I just want to make sure that we're understanding that, at least it's my understanding, I don't think we have all had a conversation that this would be a simple replacement of City Hall. At least it's my understanding that we're still evaluating what's actually going to happen there. How much of the services will stay here? Because at least it's my opinion that it's a cost issue, right? We're looking for the best, you know, the best thing for the taxpayers, the best thing for the residents. And until we have those figures, which is going to happen during the due diligence phase of this and with CBRE's help in evaluating those things, my feeling is we're not there yet. So I just want to make sure, because, you know, multiple conversations I've had with staff, whether it's Mr. Brown or whatnot, have indicated that looking at long-term possibilities would also be part of the feasibility study. And so I just want to make sure that that's the case because that's what's been specifically expressed to me.
Yes. Thank you for asking that clarifying question. So we are in the process of evaluating, well, what is the cost if we remain downtown? What is the cost if we are somewhere out west? So we still have that evaluation to complete, but yes, that is a part of our due diligence.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. Thank you. In response to Mr. Wiger's comments, I do think some clarification is necessary because I, I'm not sure, it is not, I don't believe we're discussing a binary, whether it's located or downtown. This council, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we had a clear understanding that the public-facing functions of City Hall, a good number of them, would take place in our downtown campus in its essence, be the center of this civic square, meaning our council chambers, community center space, obviously. We talked about having a council chambers that was a flex space, so it wasn't only used for the X hours a day for downtown. So that's downtown. With that naturally would require, it would be logical to have a number of functions that relate to attending meetings downtown. Perhaps the clerk's office. If we're downtown, you would naturally have some management downtown, attorney's office, clerk's office. Those, I thought we had clear consensus that those functions would remain downtown. Please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I mean, that's the conceptual plan. I would, I would urge my colleagues to reserve judgment until true feasibility studies and cost estimates are done. I think as, as with any project, we're, this is what we're planning. I don't disagree that this is what we're all planning. But once these construction numbers come back and these estimates come back, I think it's still open for discussion and I think there's still time for there to be discussion.
Okay. Does anyone, I don't agree with Mr. Wiger respectfully and I don't believe we did. So if we're all in agreement, then I think that's an issue that I think we ought to deem settled at the time being and let staff plan accordingly. Mr. Thompson?
I was going to say, I will keep my mind open on that. I was of the opinion that most of the facilities that you mentioned would include pretty much the critical mass downtown. But if staff comes to conclude that there is some better reason to have it elsewhere, I would be open to that. So I guess I maybe want to split the difference and say, I'm going to keep an open mind on that. But for purposes of planning going forward, remember the interim plan hasn't been developed yet as per part of this discussion we're going to have tomorrow and ongoing. I'm going to keep an open mind on that, on that issue.
Okay. Ms. Nakliss?
As will I. I'll keep an open mind. I would, I would like a lot of the forward-facing, as you said, everything you said, the city council chambers turned into a flex space, the, you know, the things that folks are already used to going downtown for. I think a lot of those things can, there needs to be at least some space for some of those things downtown. Of course, with technology, there, there's going to be some, some, it's going to look a little different, maybe, you know? Maybe we do some of the things online. But, but yes, I would still, I still would like to have a, as what we can in the downtown. I understand that the cost, the feasibility, if it gets extravagant and it's not a wise way to spend taxpayer dollars, yes, then we will find that out and we'll, and we'll make that choice. But, but I would like a lot of these forward-facing conveniences that people are used to getting, whether it's a small, a small substation, again, like we're doing with the police station or, or, you know, a place to get a permit, a place to ask questions, a place to, you know, some people like to interact face-to-face with other people and not do everything online. I think we still need to keep some of those services in the downtown.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So yes, I agree with Mayor Singer, when, when we saw this plan that we're getting updates on, and I understand Mr. Wiger and Mr. Thompson's ability to keep an open mind and feasibility, but when I envisioned this, we've envisioned City Hall, Government Center, and certain things that just belong in the downtown. From the very beginning of our conversations months ago, the police station would be moved to our midtown or whatever we call that area, and we would have a substation. There are certain things that need a substation. But when you look at these government centers throughout the country, throughout the state, your City Hall, your Government Center, a lot of that has to be interfacing with, we already discussed with the public, which is, that's going to be the area for our Government Center. That's what we're calling it. The bright line is there. It's close to, obviously, a rail for in and out. Now you'll have all the other facilities, but I, and I understand where you're coming from. If you're moving all these facilities now temporarily to an area, maybe they can be housed there, but maybe there's a better question for Mr. Brown. We had said that we would figure out what belongs in this area, which I'm referring to midtown, and that might be not the right use of that term. And then there are certain things that just belong in the downtown. But when I look at the Government Center, I, I would like to see City Hall there. I would like to see our complex there. That is what we've envisioned. If we're going to change that, then that's a different conversation. Because that's the conversation we've been having up to this point. So I understand the feasibility. I understand that we're looking at other space. So if we're deciding that we're going to change that, we need to be really clear how we're doing that because what we're telling the public and what we told our community is not that. We're going on the premise of what I'm calling the original plan, the original conceptual plan. And I think it's really important that we don't create confusion, especially that we're having these town halls and these open sessions and forums and public input, that we, we know the conceptual plan will change, but the essence of the plan can change fundamentally. It will confuse the community and it won't, it won't bode well with us. It won't get our project moving forward, if that makes sense. So if that's a larger conversation, then let's have it. Because if not, we need to be sure that, yeah, conceptually, it might look differently, but the essence of the plan has to remain the same, in my opinion.
And I, I do think, having had this conversation multiple times before and again today, I think we are saying the same thing, just a little differently. Let me try to recap what I'm hearing so I can make sure all five of us are aligned. There is, there was consensus then, there is still consensus now. The City Hall and the concept of what City Hall is, the public space, the meeting for four, the forum for meetings and hopefully flex spaces well, and a variety of functions that serve the public, not necessarily all of them, because they don't, they're not all there now, right now, will remain in our downtown as an integral part of the campus. The question is what the scope of that, while obviously X feet for a chamber, will need X feet for some core offices for the functions that really belong where the meetings are, attorney, management, some public payment windows and the like. It need not be the only one. But there's X square feet that will have to remain downtown. I think the discussion is of the additional uses, Y, Z, A, B, we can be able to parse out and know more after we get temporary space in. But for now, staff has been planning for an X, which we communicated to our potential partner of 80,000 square feet, a reduction in estimate from the original one, and that may further morph. Did I state everyone's understanding generally correctly? Yes, by Mr. Thompson? Yes, by Ms. Nakliss? Yes, by Ms. Drucker? Yes, by Mr. Wiger?
Yes, generally, yes.
Okay.
Generally, but again, remember, just as you just said, it was, the initial discussion was 162,000 square feet, and now we're looking at 85,000 square feet. This is something that is a work in progress, right? And, and so there's an analysis there that I'm hoping the staff can take, especially when there's something that we've discussed, which is that the majority of our municipal workforce does not live in the municipality. And for them to be in a more convenient centralized location adjacent to the tri-rail, which might be more affordable, maybe closer to the highway, might be better for human resources. And I, I'm hopeful that the staff and my colleagues will consider that for the future of the city as we adapt and grow and analyze and maybe AI helps us do things. I walk around the downtown all the time. I walk around the government buildings and I've walked around the downtown permit building. In most respects, you're not allowed to walk into the permit building and submit plans for permits. You must submit them online. You're not allowed to bring in plans to the permit department. So the way we do municipal business is changing. And so, again, we don't need a place where contractors are driving their trucks all in to the building department because they're not allowed to bring the plans there. So being adaptable to this future acknowledge, the innovation that's happening in just governance and how we do things online and whatnot, as Ms. Nakliss said, I just, it's something I hope we can appreciate too. And with all due respect, I agree that to have our public facing, to have that be a center core and in its historic base across from its original, original town hall will be a beautiful thing. And I'm totally in favor of that and Ms. Drucker's concept that it should be with, with, with those in mind. With also analyzing how the city has changed and grown over the last 100 years is important too, especially how we provide services.
Right. So to recap, I'm, we're convinced we're all saying the same thing, just a little slightly differently. Core functions downtown, including City Hall chambers and including city council chambers and other public meeting chambers. I believe staff's been planning for that. If I may note one correction to what was said, it was not the council whoever came to consensus on 162,000 square feet, nor was it who we came to consensus on 80. I think staff has been, continued to shoot for estimates based on what we're saying. And I think we're all willing to consider some of the non-core functions as things adapt, if they're going to go there. I will add one more note. The plan, as we've discussed with Terra, contemplates some housing for city employees as part of their allotment, which may also impact the desirability of having more employees live there or their desire to live there, to work there and live there too. But all of these are important considerations, which is why, I'll turn to you, Mr. Lukasik, who wanted, Lukasik, who wanted to say something anyway. How are we doing in terms of estimates as we go forward in terms of our space needs? I know when we get into space, we're going to have some, but we're probably going to need to shoot for a tighter number or more clear range even before we start occupying that space.
Great question. So we are, we are right now in the process of taking a look at, we've already looked at industry standards. But now, now we're going to have greater internal dialogue and look at other opportunities where we might be able to reevaluate how much square footage we actually need. So two, two things are going on there. One, one is that we're, we're going to do a high-level look at it. But then secondarily, we're going to try to, you know, utilize centers and other mechanisms where we can kind of track how we're using our facility, especially when we're in our temporary space. So we can have a better understanding of what space do we actually need. And that might, that might involve ultimately some change in, in terms of how we're operating and what some of our policies are as it relates to how we work. So we're going through that process right now. I don't have a timeline for you as, as it relates to exactly when we'll get to that place, but we're going through that process right now and CBRE is a partner with us in that as well.
Okay. Further questions? Mr. Wiger?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. Along those lines, again, being in the commercial real estate industry for many years, you might find that some of the potential suitors who can house some of the municipal employees, whether it's temporary or long-term, as you said, will be very helpful in helping plan or doing some conceptual space plans with this. Because again, it's, it's a, it's a win-win, right? It's providing the temporary and/or permanent basis for us and a financial, you know, a financial benefit to them. So I'm sure if CBRE reaches out to these potential suitors that, that they'd be happy to participate. And of course, they might not do exactly space planning for municipal organizations, but they've done space plannings for entities that require 50,000 to 85,000 square feet before many, many more times than we have. So, you know, let's rest on the, you know, rely a little bit on the private sector that has significant experience on this to help us. And I think they'd be happy to. Thank you.
May I ask one other question, please?
Please.
So, so doing some economic analysis on the options that we have available, you know, when we started, we were looking at, hey, we'll all be, we'll have everything out of the downtown or we'll have everything downtown. I'm assuming we can narrow that scope so that we can, when we're doing that analysis, we can think about, hey, here's the public-facing components that are going to stay downtown and that's going to be a given. And then if there are some other pieces that we think from an operational perspective that they should move out of town, we should be thinking about that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, but in my conversations with Mr. Brown and based on those that we've had at the dais before, I thought that was already the direction we were going, that we knew it wasn't all or nothing. It was some downtown and maybe the rest downtown, maybe the rest not.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that I was on the same page with you.
Okay. Do you feel clear now?
I do feel better now. Thank you.
May I also follow up with a question to you, sir, after Mr. Wiger's point. I believe the suggestion to have the private sector and CBRE look at space planning and perhaps they offer their insights as a potential landlord, I'm sure they'd be motivated to do so. Aren't, isn't CBRE doing this already? And maybe they can speak if you can't answer.
Can, can you rephrase that?
Is CBRE already working? We, we've consulted with CBRE. We've done our own studies. Isn't CBRE already doing what Mr. Wiger had suggested?
Yes.
Which, talking with our potential partners?
Yes, they are. We're working with them on that now.
All right. Very good. All right. Questions further? All right. Thank you. Well, if there's no further questions, then we'll open up the Florida public comment. Ms. Morrow, would you like to speak now?
Yes.
And then anyone else after her? Please give your name and address.
If the, if the city's objective, if the city objective is just to make money-
Ms. Morrow?
Yes.
Could you use the microphone so everyone can hear you?
Okay.
And please give your name and address. It's the home audience, Morrow.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If the city's objective is to make money, Palm Beach Gardens just put in the newspaper that they're going to knock down 12 pickleball courts and move them. They're going to knock down a skateboard park and they're going to move it. But they're going to build a $40 million ice skating rink, something beautiful, and do more recreation in their city. Now that's an idea-
Ms. Morrow? Could you, could you give your name and address though, please?
What?
Your name and address, can you share it, please? It's required. Or I can read it for you.
Okay.
Your name and address. Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth.
Yes, I've been to multiple meetings. And I've been to City Hall many times. Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. I've lived here 35 years. I have three children. I have two grandchildren that are teenagers. And we like to play tennis. That's pretty obvious. And I'm on a tennis team. And I was talking about the city of Palm Beach Garden is making more recreation, grand recreation. So if you wanted to do something grand in Boca Raton and give us a name rather than just concrete more development, maybe you should build a women's stadium for a 10-day professional tennis event, just like they, exactly like they have in Del Ray. They have 14 courts for the public and they have an 8,000-seat stadium. And they make millions of dollars with TV, ESPN, and it's only 10 days of traffic. This government redevelopment project with 1,000 to approximately 8,000 new people, they're going to need more tennis. So what I've been doing, I'm not just one person, well, I am one person, but- So what I've been doing, I'm not just one person, well, I am one person, but I've talked to over 250 people personally. I have over 250 signed petitions. My petition states exactly this. Petition to save Boca Raton Tennis Center, 271 Northwest Boca Raton Boulevard, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432, 561-393-7978. We, the people, want to keep our tennis courts for residents of Boca Raton, Florida at the same site to walk, to ride our bikes, and to play tennis in east downtown Boca Raton. This site of Boca Raton Tennis Center was built and opened on February 26, 1966. In 1992, Boca Raton Tennis Center won an outstanding tennis center award. Together, Boca Raton residents can keep our Boca Raton Tennis Center at the same site, make it an outstanding facility again, and a landmark as well. And people sign, they print their name, they sign their name, they put their address, they put their date of birth, and their email is optional. And I have over 250 of these. And, and that's, and, and that's why I made, that's why I made this poster.
Thank you. Ms. Morrow, your time has expired. Could you please conclude?
Okay. Okay. And I had nine questions that I sent to you and to all four of the council members, and I haven't gotten back an answer. So it says 47 seconds on there.
That means you're 40, now 50 over.
No.
Yes.
Okay. Well, please respond to my email that I sent to all of you because those are very important nine questions.
All right. Ms. Morrow, thank you. I will note, you might want to check your email. You mentioned this to me on Friday. I did respond to your latest email over the weekend as well, so now there's two I've sent that you haven't seen. But I will ask this, if you have those petitions, would you like to leave a copy with the city clerk so we can see them?
Yes, I would like to see a copy of your answer to my eight or nine questions.
No, yes, but no. My question was, you have a petition. Would you like to give a copies to the city clerk so we may see your petition?
Yes, and tomorrow I will count them and bring all of them.
Thank you.
Because that's what people want.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the government campus? Mr. Unjin, you can go ahead.
Jonathan Unjin, 6501 Congress Avenue. So what I heard originally, when you were selecting a dance partner or whatever you called it, it was, you're picking a partner, not a plan. So I think it is good to keep things open-minded on the taxpayer dollar. Maybe it does make more sense to put other things in the city's center as opposed to necessarily even in this area that's very far north or that area that's very far south. But what I'd like to, to mention is, again, back to this plan in relation to State Bill 102, 328, and House Bill 991. So in regards to that, a large portion of the government campus isn't in the downtown. So how many units are you looking to build? How many acres do you have? Is that under 20 units an acre? Or is it that this plan is different, that they get treated differently than the rest of the town? So I'd like to, and again, you're given money, the state gives money for 102, 328, all these House bills, this city gets money. So maybe in regards to the allocation, and you say how well you mismanage your money and the CRA and everything else, you've taken state money to, in essence, have zero projects that are under State Bill 102 or 328. There's no 40% affordable housing project in this city. There's been a bunch of the 10 or the 15% conditional project, but nobody's taken you up on that because, again, it's not even economically feasible. So the reality is, is this city isn't perfect. They have interpreted things that the legislators, attorneys, land use attorneys have disagreed with in regards to the downtown being exempt, that the DDRI is exempt. I think I've heard at every single one of these downtown projects, how many people are against it, whether they don't want it to block their view, which, again, isn't, you don't have any right to a view. But the reality is, is the downtown doesn't want to see more development. It doesn't make sense to continue to develop on two-lane roads that are very, 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 very congested. One-lane roads in many places. So I'm just continuing to come up here to give you something to think about that somebody takes the bull by the horns and says, okay, maybe we need to look at where the future of this town is development-wise, not continuing to oversaturate. And also something else, I heard about the bright line in relation to the government center. There's no other stops in Boca Raton. So anybody coming for a building permit or anything else, they're driving. They're in this area. They're not taking the bright line from Fort Lauderdale to go to this city government center to go to the government offices. So again, it's for the city of Boca. Last I checked, there's no other Boca Raton stops on the bright line. So let's look at the reality of what we're looking at instead of making excuses for why, to shove it down everybody's throats. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the government campus? Ms. Colas?
I'm going to be leaving a comment in reference to the two previous presenters before me. Ms. Morrow had made an interesting comment in which she stated that you guys are interested in making money. So I'm going to state that there is a possible way of actually utilizing intelligent police officers like I've listed to actually increase funds for you guys and for development in the Boca Raton area. I had referenced this last month in February, where there is a model that I have called, which is like FEH-styled capitalism, where essentially you would have intelligent individuals, cyber cops, so on, actually generate funds that can be used to increase development as Ms. Morrow and also the previous gentleman had stated. In addition to this, they had mentioned how you guys should look into possibly increasing development in other areas of Boca Raton. I am also in agreement of this. I live in the west side of Boca. I don't necessarily want development there, but I think there are certain areas that could be, could receive a little bit more development as well. For example, most people, like at least when I came to Boca, I came for FAU, so around the FAU area, doing more stuff around there, possibly around the mall, there, possibly around the mall and a couple other places, too. And I believe last month, there was a reference to possibly concentrating development in TODs, which I believe Councilmember Wiger had mentioned before. I am for this, and cyber police could also help with that as well. Okay.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Hello. Todd Adell, 229 Southwest Fifth Street, Boca Raton. I'm just wanting to comment about, my understanding is that with the City Hall redevelopment project, the skate park at Tim Huxold will be demolished as part of that. I'm here to just voice support for, if that's the case, replacement. I've heard that there's talk of including a project at the North Park Development. I found out last minute on my way here that there will be a meeting tonight at 5:15, I have from my understanding, the Parks and Recreation, but I won't be able to attend that. So I just wanted to voice my, my support of, if you're going to remove the skate park at Tim Huxold, to please consider, you know, strongly consider creating a new, modern, free park in that area. My family skateboards, there's lots of other skateboarders in, in the community around here. When we want to go skateboard, we typically have to go to Miami, to Boynton Beach, elsewhere. Lots of skate parks in the South Florida area have been closed down, including Fort Lauderdale, Coral Springs, and others. If you're looking to bring people to your, your community, it's a great way to bring people here. They will travel to go to a world-class skate park, especially one where you don't have to pay, including paying in, in cash as the current Boca Skate Park is, which is a major problem for people just coming to do a recreational activity. And also, one that is not limited to very strange hours, opening at noon, for example, on a weekend. You should make the park open. There's lots of examples of that in other cities around Florida and South Florida. Look at Boynton, look at Tamrac. There's many other examples of that, Lot 11 in Miami. So just here to voice my strong concern, I've been to a few other redevelopment meetings and workshops where there was lots of other supporters for this, you know, for skate parks in the area, and I don't want us to be left out as the Tim Huxold Park is removed from the City Hall development complex. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call for public comment. Mr. Adell and Ms. Morrow, since you're here, and we don't have any, I don't see any softball players in the audience, I'll turn it to Mr. Brown, who can update everyone, as we've been doing, that our plans are to replace recreation, whether on the site, near the site, or throughout them. We're looking at a variety of options. And Mr. Brown, can you share, please?
That's correct. Just to reiterate on softball, we've worked with the Beech and Park District, the softball fields that are at Memorial Park today will be replaced as Sugar Sand Park. There will actually be three, perhaps four, with a clubhouse, et cetera. So there'll be a much better facility for softball than we presently have. With regard to tennis downtown and the skate park, is our intention to replace what we have. It will not, may partially be downtown in terms of tennis. As far as the skate park goes, we want to, as Mr. Adell said, we're looking toward creating a more modern skate park, something that's a little less of its era than what we have now. And I think it's also called a pump that goes with the actual skate things. I don't skate, obviously. We were hoping, we are planning to work with the Beech and Park District to incorporate that on the west side of Second Avenue up in North Park. There may be a time period where we do not have a skate park, but we will have, we will have one as part of our plans.
Thank you. All right. Now, under Future Agenda Matters and Items of Public Concern, we have the presentation of the Annual Investment Report. Mr. Brown? I see Mr. Service moving this way.
Mr. Service and Mr. Conahan of the Financial Services Department will present the Annual Investment Report.
Thank you. Mr. Service.
Yes, Mr. Conahan, our trajectory manager will be presenting this item.
Mr. Conahan.
Esteemed members of council, here to talk about how we performed with the city's investment portfolio for the fiscal year 2024, period from October 1 to September 2024. Just as a quick brief of the key principles of the investment policy, which I think we are all familiar with, but it bears restating. We are governed primarily by Florida State Statute, Chapter 218, Part 4. We have adopted an investment policy, most recently last September, which allowed us to invest in a slightly longer period for specifically self-amortizing government-agency investments. So that was the most recent change to that policy. The priority, as always, is in order, safety, liquidity, and yield. Sly. I think that went one too far. There it is. In compliance with policy, these are all of our adopted policy limits, as well as all of the allocations that existed as of September 30, 2024. We are in compliance with all of our maximum allocation limits, which are there to ensure that we are following those three principles of safety and liquidity before yield. The majority of our portfolio right now is with United States government-sponsored enterprises. That's what are commonly known as the government agencies, but they're not technically agencies. They're the Freddie Macs and Fannie Mays, and they issue a lot of sort of government debt. The portfolio was broken down more categorically this way. A lot of our investments in 2024 were geared towards pushing out the duration of the portfolio longer, making sure that we are protected in the case of potential ratings decreases. The Federal Reserve has been musing about how to best tackle the problem of the economy, particularly inflation and employment, and it's been a bit of a roller coaster year for those decisions. The Federal Reserve has sort of gone back and forth a number of times on how they're going to approach the investment rates going forward. And at the end of fiscal 2024, rates were on a very steep downward trend. They've reversed their position a little bit in the intervening months since then. People are forecasting, people being investors mainly, are forecasting that the Fed, who, again, they do not actually know what they're going to do, are going to be keeping rates steadier, raising them, who knows? But sentiment has shifted away, which has a very different effect on the yields, as you'll see. Throughout the fiscal year 2024, the allocations changed to more heavily favor fixed income investing, so pushing that out longer almost entirely in what are called bullet investments, meaning that we lock in the rate for four or five years, and whichever way the Fed goes, we're guaranteed to get back that investment and that rate for the entire duration. That is reflected in this chart, where you can see that more of our investments exists from the three-to-five-year space than they have in previous fiscal years. And this is noting how the Fed has changed its targeted rates over time. The most recent fiscal year, they kept it very, very steady, but it did start to decline towards the end of the year. And you can see at the bottom there some beyond September 2024 rates, where we have faced a steep decline in rates compared to where they were when this portfolio was last measured. This is a graph of how those trends have changed over time, including the, the peaks and troughs are all about measuring how the rates were a year prior. So the difference between the point on the chart and the immediate preceding 12 months. And you can see that we are on a very downward trend. We had a period of steep increases in the wake of the COVID pandemic and the tackling of inflation. Now that they see inflation slowing down, they're trying to reduce rates, but it's been a lot slower of a reduction than it was a rise. Now, because they kept rates very steady, above 4%, we were able to achieve very strong returns for fiscal year 2024, 4.28% on an amortized basis compared to the 3.09 of the preceding year. And if we look at this next slide, this is the total return, which is inclusive of the unrealized gains and losses, meaning the change in price of the investments already held in the portfolio, some of which were quite old and had different rates. Because the Fed was looking at reducing rates, and in fact, did reduce rates in the back half of the year, the balance of that unrealized gain or loss was very much a gain at the measurement date of September 2024. Now, that has changed a little bit in this fiscal year because the sentiment has changed the other way, meaning that rates are staying steady or possibly rising, and that has a opposite impact on the health of the portfolio. I shouldn't say the health, the yields, the current returns. So while it looks very, very strong here, current year rates are looking a lot closer to the previous years in the 3% range, and that's probably where it's going to stay for a bit. This and other information can be seen in more detail with a lot more information about the nature of the risks and the durations of the various investments in the portfolio in this year's annual comprehensive financial report on the pages listed. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Ms. Drucker first.
Thank you for the presentation. I thought a general question, with our interest-bearing
With our interest-bearing, like, time deposits, our money market account, et cetera, are those all of the bank, our reserves, like, are those in specific banks or are those spread out?
Right now, the only investments in that category are the money market funds that are held usually temporarily in our custodian bank account. We have a custodian bank that is the holder of all of the actual, like, bond certificates, which are really all electronic these days. It is a FGFOA best practice to hold all investments with a third-party custodian, and it is in our policy to do so. But because the custodian is not our primary bank, they have to do something with the cash on hand that comes from the natural flow of those investments. So all the coupons that they throw off, all of the things that we have to send to them to have money there to purchase new investments, they keep in a money market fund.
And who is that bank?
That's a principal bank at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Wigder.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Going through this report, again, I think we all can appreciate that I diversified portfolio sufficiently, you know, sufficiently diverse, basically reduces risk. But really, just a question of information is, I noticed that some of our, some of our exposure is in international investments, not just the little bonds, but some international equity portfolios or whatnot, and some of our pension funds and something like that. And that the percentage of such funds was, in one case, was 11%, and another case was 21% of the total holdings. And so I guess it would be helpful to me to understand, compared to other cities and other large fund holders, you know, is this just standard practice having, you know, between 10% to 20% our investments in international, you know, having exposure to international investments, you know? And given certain things going on in the world right now, you know, do we, do we look at these on an annual basis and readjust them based on kind of geopolitical concerns and things like that, saying, hey, maybe we need to reallocate every year how much we have invested internationally versus domestically?
Yeah, let me, Councilmember Wigder, the, this report does not include pension investments. So this is just the cities, the city itself excluding pension funds. Different investment rules and policies guide the investment of the city's pension funds, and those are overseen by each of the pension boards. This portfolio, other than the Israel bonds, there are no international holdings. This, this portfolio also does not include any equity positions. So there are, our investment policy does not provide for those. So, so I'd be curious, and I can follow up with you after the meeting regarding the positions that you're referring to in the international holdings.
Sure. So this is just cash on hand, bonds, fixed income, pretty much?
So it is. It's largely, as Mr. Conahan mentioned, yes, agency bonds. We do have corporate holdings, so we have corporate bonds, but not corporate equity. So there, it's a, it's a mix of those. If you look on the first page that shows the different buckets with the percentages of allowable allocations per the policy and our actual positions, you can kind of see those different, those different groupings. So, but yeah, it's mostly fixed income type holdings over a five-year period. And we work to, you know, we've been working this year to, to diversify those holdings time-wise so that we have a regular maturity ladder occurring to just reduce interest-rate fluctuation risk, so that we constantly have bonds maturing and we're out in the market reinvesting those, those funds unless we're holding them for a specific project. So this is everything that's not pension assets. So this would be, include the city's general fund, but it would also include the utility fund cash, for example, would be managed through this process. So we keep enough cash on hand to meet our current obligations, and anything in excess of that, we do invest over that five-year window in order to generate a return for the, for the city.
But other than the Israel bonds, there's no other international holdings?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And, and we do a, we do a much more detailed review of the individual holdings with the Financial Advisory Board. They've received this report already, and so we'd be happy to provide that more detailed report to you or, or any of you, if, if you're interested in seeing that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'd like to see it.
Sure.
Thank you.
One small point of clarification on that. You may see, if you examine our holdings in corporates, that you'll see names like Toyota, which sounds like a foreign entity, but it's actually the American-based financing branch of them, the Toyota Motor Credit Corporation, for example. So that's not really foreign investing.
Further questions? And Mr. Zervis, my understanding is the only foreign-issued debt that's allowed under state law are Israel bonds. Is that right?
I think that's left up to us to adopt as an investment policy, but our investment policy only allows Israel bonds.
I believe that's correct. I'm not aware of any state statute that prohibits international bonds.
All right, very well. All right, thank you. Further questions? All right. Well, thank you for the update. All right. That concludes Future Agenda Matters. We'll turn to City Manager Reports. Mr. Brown?
Just very briefly, if I completely confused everyone with my bumbling over the summer schedule before, just to reiterate for today so that everybody's clear, we plan to meet on June 9th and 10th, July 14th and 15th, and August 25th and 26th. And I will firm that up again tomorrow evening. That's all. Thanks.
Very well, thank you. City Manager Reports, Mr. Kaler.
I have no report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. I'll start on my left today with Mr. Thompson for Councilmember Reports.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knackles.
I just want to thank everyone for, oh, that's not for today, that's for tomorrow, the picture, but, but just thank everyone for acknowledging Florida Bicycle Month and for Ms. Drucker for getting out there on the bike. She's become a pro out on the bike, and practice makes perfect. And for our staff for putting together the events for Florida Bicycle Month. And Mr. Brown, thank you for supporting that as well. It's very important and, and, you know, we've heard time after time of, you know, how much people want to be outside and want recreation, and, and we continue to, to improve our bicycling infrastructure. And I know we have, we have great bicycle infrastructure, but we need to continue to, to make it better. And, and I think we, we all are striving for that. So I just want to thank you for acknowledging Florida Bicycle Month.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So a few things, just because we, just to wrap up a few things, but to piggyback off of what Commissioner Knackles just said, obviously, it's Florida Bike Month, and we were, we were on the Real Trail this, this weekend. But we were also in Tallahassee about two weeks ago, asking for appropriations for our bridge to connect El Real Trail. So hopefully, that'll make it through this year. That was one of the items that the governor vetoed last year. And for us, public safety is always number one on our list, and hopefully, we can get that appropriations awarded to us this year, and we can go ahead and build that underground tunnel to connect, especially for us when we ride it. You, you see the deficiency in the infrastructure. I myself would be heading back for Florida League of Cities next week to Tallahassee and continue advocating for home rule protection. I won't get into all the details, but just bad policy. There's just bad policies preempting local government all throughout. There's just from permitting to the CRA bill, to the new iteration of the Live Local Act, just really bad policy. That's all I can say, but we're going to continue to fight the good fight. I also had the opportunity of being in DC, Washington DC, last week with National League of Cities, where I sit on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and had the opportunity to sit with our lobbyists and discuss our future, hopefully, Bright Line application. I'll be meeting with staff, I mentioned it to Mr. Brown, in order to advocate. I also met with Department of Transportation. I met with the Florida Railroad Safety folks, just advocating in Tallahassee for our federal grants and our funding and what it is that we need to do as officials. Again, the largest National League of Cities ever, over 1,000 participants. So as we can see, it goes to show you municipal government is really under attack between the federal and at the state level. Also want to thank staff for putting together a press conference that came together really, really quickly, and it really was just a resolution. Thank you to this council for unanimously adopting the hands-free resolution for Dory Saves Lives. The press conference was held on Friday. Thank you, Ms. Knackles, for joining me on Friday. And it was because the Senate bill passed really quickly, and it's getting bipartisan support. So in an area where things are so divided, it's great to see that people still want to save lives. Also had the opportunity to visit a new facility in downtown, it's not in the downtown, it's in East Boca, called Terracotta House, which is a beautiful little art studio. We've always talked about the warehouse, art studio district, public art, et cetera, et cetera. They had a, the first Women's Exhibition for Women International Month, and I asked, they asked me to go visit, and it wasn't on our calendar, it was just something that someone asked me, and I had the opportunity to go out there. So if you ever have the opportunity to make it out there, Terracotta House, if you follow me on social media, I posted a bunch of things. I also want to congratulate the Homeless Coalition on Palm Beach Mayor's Ball. Ms. Knackles and I attended on Saturday. They raised, what I understood, over $600,000 for the Homeless Coalition. It was an incredible event. I had the opportunity to sit on the host committee this year. Thank you to Mr. Brown. Thank you to Angel, our aide in the city, for providing the basket. Every city was supposed to come up and provide a basket, and it was an incredible event with an Ash Vegas theme, but it was really, really, was sold out, and it was a lot, a lot of fun. And that wraps up my report. Thank you.
Ms. Wigder.
Yeah, thank you. Some of the sentiment that Ms. Drucker, that you said, I do agree with. It is a challenge. I don't know if I would necessarily go to the point where it's, it's bad policy. It's, it's policy that we have to deal with in, in a state where, in Tallahassee, they make certain decisions. We might not agree with those decisions, but what I've learned over the past couple of years, when all these bills have been coming through, is that Mr. Brown and the staff and our financial team and our development team and everyone, whatever, whatever policies are created by our legislature, that our staff works and implements them, even though we might personally not be in favor of them or not, and I think we do the best we can adopting them. And I think the Live Local Act is one of those things. Advocating for SB 328 is one of those things. Our C I M D division is one of those things. What we're doing now, advocating for CRA things, is one of those things. And I think, you know, what, what people have to realize is, there's a lot of tax bills up there that could make it more difficult for us to fund things like public safety. And the, you know, when we were up in Tallahassee, the firefighters were up there, too, advocating because what we've learned from our Financial Services Department is that 120% of our ad valorem taxes, essentially, dollar for dollar, if you go and you add it up, including the fire services fee, goes to public safety. So like I said, there's some major decisions happening in Tallahassee. They're going to affect us, and we're going to respond and do the things we have to do to protect the people and to advocate for them and to implement them. And sometimes it's a grind. We do what we have to do to help continue moving the city forward and invest wisely, as we just saw from our Financial Services people. But I'm proud of the work that we're doing. And like I said, whatever happens in Tallahassee, we'll, we'll deal with it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And just to pick up on that point, as Ms. Drucker acknowledged at the end, some good things are coming out of Tallahassee, so it's not all bad. There are good things, there are bad things, at least from a city, or concerning things from a city perspective. That's why I'm glad we have, all my colleagues have been up in Tallahassee recently, and we have a robust effort to continue to communicate concerns about home rule and issues that impact cities through us, through our staff, through our lobbying team, through our fellow elected officials at various levels and business interests as well. So there are things that we try to do to ensure we maintain the quality of life we've grown accustomed to in Boca Raton and make it even better, which was the theme of the State of the City address. And again, I wanted to thank city staff and, of course, all my colleagues for your partnership in our effort and seizing the moment, as I said, on Friday night. But staff for putting together a really great event that I think opened up city government to our residents and stakeholders in a new way that we hadn't been doing the last few years. This was our most well-attended State of the City address in our history, and we think we had, I don't know the final count, but in the high hundreds of people, if not four figures, by the end of the evening. And I think that's just another way that we try to reach out and share a good word and be accessible, as we are today, as we are often. So as you see us around town, share your concerns with us, and we will be back for our next regularly scheduled meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. With no further business for today, we are adjourned at the time of 3:10. Thank you.